Good afternoon, and welcome to Town Meeting Preview. I'm Town Moderator Tim Goddard. I'm joined by Littleton's Town Administrator Anthony Ansaldi. And we're here to give you a preview of the 10 articles that are on the special Town Meeting Warrant. The Town Meeting is Wednesday, February 15th at 7:00 p.m. at the Charlie K. Gymnasium. And we'll give you a brief overview of what's on the warrant, and then Anthony and some staff members here are going to explain in further detail the various articles on the warrant. You should have received in the mail by now, I hope, your Town Meeting Report. And this is that indispensable guide to Town Meeting that you, you know, hopefully will have time to read through and bring with you to Town Meeting. It's got information on the warrant, all the articles, the motions that are expected to be made for the articles, recommendations of Town Boards, including the Finance Committee for the financial articles, and explanations as to what, you know, the article really means. Sometimes it's necessary to put them in kind of convoluted legalese, but there's nice concise explanations of the articles within the Town Meeting Report, and I hope you'll have the chance to read those. Just a few preliminaries. Again, we're meeting on Wednesday, February 15th at 7:00 p.m. in the Middle School Gymnasium, the Charlie K. Gymnasium. And just by way of introduction, the ground rules, if you will, for the meeting. Formal presentations are limited to 10 minutes, both pro and con, and voters may speak to an article or motion. Three minutes at a time is what they're limited to. We've cut that back a few times, and we think three minutes is plenty of time for people to offer their thoughts and to keep the debate moving. In the past, particularly at annual Town Meetings, we've done a procedure called the Call of the Articles whereby we attempt to bundle the more routine, non-controversial articles and take a single affirmative vote approving them, and thereby saving time for the more articles that we think will require more attention, more debate, and things that are not sort of, as I say, ordinary or mundane. Where this warrant is only 10 articles, I'm thinking that we will not do the Call of the Articles because, as you'll see, a lot of these articles are routine, they're necessary business that the town needs to complete before May. And I think that things will move right along. There are three articles that we think will generate a lot of discussion, a lot of debate, and I think there'll be plenty of time for those articles. So Anthony, do you want to briefly run through the 10 articles? And then, I know you've got some people lined up to provide further detail.
Sure. Tim, I think it's important with this special Town Meeting to let the residents know too that, you know, it's a February Town Meeting, and we traditionally have not done a February Town Meeting.
Right.
And there is that chance for inclement weather, so we have planned for an inclement weather date, and that's going to be the following night, Thursday, February 16th at 7:00 p.m. And again, we'll be at the Middle School Gymnasium, the Charles K. Forbes... Charles, I'm sorry.
Charles Forbes K.
Charles Forbes K.
Right.
Gymnasium. So, and we'll make that announcement after consulting with the Town Moderator, and it will be on the Town's webpage. And in the event that we see something that looks like that could impact Town Meeting, we'll certainly get that out as soon as possible. So, stay tuned on that.
Yeah, no, thank you for that note, Anthony. And it's really no different than if we had a Town Meeting that went two nights. We don't anticipate that, certainly with 10 articles on the warrant.
Right.
But if you were to go more than one night, you know, for the sake of the school department and everybody involved in the setup for the gymnasium, you wouldn't want to put it out a week or two weeks. You'd want to do it the next night, and you could leave it set up and not have to break everything down.
Right, right. So, sure. So, I'll run through the 10 articles that we're going to be discussing for a Town Meeting. So, the first article is Bills of Prior Year. The second article is a change in the annual Town Meeting date and time. The Article III is to reprogram and rescind Park Recreation Community Education Enterprise Fund. Article IV is to amend the Fiscal Year '23 Budget for LCTV Receipts Reserved for Appropriation from the Public Education Government Access Fund. Article V is to amend the Sewer Enterprise Fiscal Year 2023 Budget, and that's a Littleton Electric Light and Water Department article. Article VI is to amend the Fiscal Year '23 Community Preservation Fund Budget. Article VII, and that's one of those articles, Tim, where we think that there'll be more discussion on, and that is the purchase of Indian Hill Music School, which is 3236 King Street. Article VIII is some housekeeping. It's rescind and reprogram some old prior Capitol Town Meeting warrant articles. Article IX is the King Street Common Zoning District Expansion, and that's another article that we believe will generate some discussion on. And finally, Article X is the Firearms Business Zoning Bylaw article, and for sure that will generate some attention at Town Meeting.
I'm sure it will. And I think, as you can tell from Anthony's description, most of these are fairly routine town business, bills of prior years, and budget amendments, and authorizations, reauthorizations, that sort of thing. The ones that stand out are the potential purchase of Indian Hill. That requires a two-thirds vote for a couple of reasons. First of all, the town would be borrowing the funds necessary to complete the purchase, and it involves an interest in real estate, so it's a two-thirds vote on that score. Likewise, the two zoning articles require a two-thirds majority, and as you say, you know, they are likely to generate the most discussion. Articles VII, IX, and X are the ones that I know the Board and Anthony have been kind of pointing to as the ones that will... The town will want to take its time with and get right, and the other ones, while they're important, they're not as... Honestly, they could have waited until May, some of them.
Yes.
I mean, but we know that we need to do these pieces of business, so why not do it? If you've got to go to the expense of a Town Meeting, you might as well get the most business done you can get done in one meeting.
Yeah, you know exactly, Tim. I think that, you know, we looked at this, and where we were going to have a few articles here to discuss, some of these articles would have been on the annual Town Meeting, and it ends up at 30 articles, 35. We just figured it was an opportunity where to do some housekeeping and clean up articles, and hopefully shorten our annual Town Meeting somewhat by addressing them now.
That would be helpful. All right, why don't...
Yes.
Why don't we jump into the explanations of the articles, Anthony? Who do you have lined up for that?
Sure. So, in keeping with our theme of the past couple of preview shows, we have staff that's going to explain some of these articles. So, first up, to talk about Articles 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 8, is our Finance Director, Alicia Nunley Benjamin.
Thank you, Anthony. We're going to talk today about Article 1, Select Board and Finance Committee Bills of Prior Year per Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 64. Any bills that don't have a purchase order from prior year have to go before the Town Meeting for approval. We have KP Law Legal Service Bills from Fiscal Year '22 that didn't have a purchase order in place that need to be voted in the amount of $4,530.50. Some Middlesex Veterinary Center Fiscal Year '21 Veterinary Service Bills for $98.75, and two Fiscal Year '22 Veterinary Service Bills for Middlesex Veterinary totaling $549.50. Now, we're going to skip ahead to Article 3, the Parks Recreation and Community Education Reprogram and Rescind PRCE Enterprise Fund. At the November Special Town Meeting, we had appropriated $463,000 in free cash. We're actually going to rescind that, and instead, we are going to use $463,000 in the PRCE retained earnings. Then what we are going to do is revoke the provision of Chapter 44, Section 53 F 1/2 of Massachusetts General Law, ceasing the PRCE Enterprise Fund effective June 30, 2023. Now that they have their revolving fund they've been building up over the year, that Enterprise Fund needs to be closed down as of the end of this fiscal year. So effectively, this article will have them spend down the entire Enterprise Fund and have it close effective June 30th. We're now going to move on to Article 4, which amends the Fiscal Year '23 LCTV Receipts Reserved for Appropriation Fund Budget by $2,297. This is due to the Classification and Compensation Plan that was voted at Special Town Meeting, so that $2,297 will cover the steps and cost of that new salary table. Article 5, Board of Water Commissioners, Littleton Electric Light and Water Department, amend the Fiscal Year '23 Sewer Enterprise Operating Budget. This is for $92,000. We're using Sewer Enterprise Fund retained earnings to pay for bond anticipational interest that was unanticipated in their budget that they need to cover. That is coming due May 17th, 2023. Article 6, Community Preservation Committee, amend the Fiscal Year '23 Community Preservation Fund Budget. The reason for the need in this article was at November 1st, we weren't sure what the match was. It came out much later in December than what we had originally estimated. We originally estimated it as part of our original budget back in May, but it actually came in much lower, and because we voted percentages, it actually changed the way the distribution had to be for the CP buckets. So, our original appropriated amount for open space was $231,595. We are reducing that to $202,419. The historic reserve from $104,218 to $93,178. Community Housing Reserve from $115,798 to $101,209. Recreation Reserve from $115,798 to $101,209. General Reserve, we had zero during the May Town Meeting. During November Town Meeting, it will now be $34,827. Admin from $11,580 to $8,031. The original appropriated amount was $578,989, is now down to $540,873. Article VIII, Capital Transfers, rescind and reprogram prior Capitol Town Meeting warrant articles. So, in this article, we are transferring $336,693.88 from the following unspent capital appropriations, and we are going to use that money for the purpose of funding various capital projects for buildings under the care, custody, and controls of the Select Board. The work may include, but is not limited to feasibility studies, design, and construction, and there's a listing of these different projects. Now, what we do annually is we go through them, because for the town's financial policy, anything that's over three years old is to be closed out or reprogrammed. We are going to rescind the unspent balance of $22,600 from the May 7, 2018 Article VIII-C, Town Offices Meeting Room 307 Upgrades Capital Project to be returned to the LCTV Receipts Reserved for Appropriation Pay Access Fund. We are going to rescind the unspent balance of $68,550 from the May 1, 2017 Article VIII, Mill Pond Dredging Capital Project, and the unspent balance of $20,000 from the May 6, 2019 Article VIII for Lake Matawanaki Improvements for total of $88,500. And those said funds will be returned to the Water Enterprise Fund. And I think, I believe, that is all the financial articles in the special Town Meeting. So, back to you, Anthony. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. To explain Article II, we're going to call on our Assistant Town Administrator, Ryan Farrar.
Thank you, Anthony. Now, we're going to talk about Article II, which is a proposition to change the annual Town Meeting date and time. Purpose of Article II is to provide the Select Board with the flexibility to determine the date and time of the annual Town Meeting within the first week of May. Town staff have requested that all Town Meetings preferably take place on a Tuesday or other day later in the week to allow for setup for the meeting to take place during the regular work week. The current bylaw stipulates a Monday annual Town Meeting date, which requires staff to come in over the weekend to lay out the room, prepare for the television broadcast, and coordinate audiovisual requirements for Town Meeting. The annual Town Meeting would still be required to take place during the first week of May. However, Article II would allow the Select Board to set the Town Meeting date and time during the first week in May. Now, we're going to talk about Article VII, which is the purchase of the Indian Hill Music School, 3236 King Street. There've been some frequently asked questions asked about this property that we'd like to try to address today. First question is, why is the town proposing to purchase 36 King Street in the Indian Hill Music Center? The town conducted two space needs studies in 2017 and 2021. These studies determined Town Hall requires a full gut renovation to bring the building up to code and address structural deficiencies. The 2021 Space Needs Study also determined that the Indian Hill Music Center would be a poor fit for a senior center due to its size, three levels, restricted options for large program spaces, and lack of windows at occupant height. Accordingly, the town is planning for future space needs with the recent construction of the Reuben-Hore Library in 2021, the Center on Shattuck Street Senior Center, which is projected to break ground in the summer of 2023, and the purchase of the Indian Hill Music Center to house the school department, administrative offices, and parks, recreation, and community education, staff, and activities. The next question is, how will the town utilize 36 King Street? The Indian Hill Music Center is 21,507 square feet. The town plans to utilize the basement for the after-school program, first floor for PRCE administrative staff, as well as activities and events in the auditorium, and the second floor will host the school department administrative staff. All of these staff and activities are currently hosted at Town Hall. Next question is, what is the proposed purchase price for 36 King Street, Indian Hill Music Center? The original asking price for Indian Hill was $4,200,000. Town commissioned an appraisal of 36 King Street, which concluded the full property value to be $3,870,000. The town's offer of $3,500,000 was accepted by the property owner. The real estate agent has at least two backup offers in hand. The estimated price of $163 per square foot is significantly less than if the town were to either renovate Town Hall or construct a new building. In comparison, the Reuben-Hore Library, which was completed in 2021, had a square footage cost of about $635 per square foot. How does the town propose to pay for 36 King Street? Town is requesting an Article VII of the February 15, 2023 Special Town Meeting to borrow up to $3,500,000 to purchase 36 King Street. The purchase would take place within the town's existing levy limit and will not require a separate Proposition 2 1/2 override. Article VIII of the Special Town Meeting closes out prior Town Meeting funding authorizations to make available $336,694 to support town facilities and fund a feasibility study to renovate Indian Hill Music Center for town use. The plan is to come back before the fall of 2023 Special Town Meeting to request funding for the improvements identified in the feasibility study. The next question's been asked is, what are the other uses of 36 King Street? Total site footprint is 4.12 acres, including an approximately one-acre lot, which can be utilized for other prospective town or school needs. Future uses of the site could include expansion of the existing two tennis courts on the Littleton High School property to four tennis courts, installation of new pickleball courts on the current parking lot, and the reimagination of the one-acre vacant parcel for other PRCE or school projects. That's Article VII. Back to you, Anthony.
To explain Article IX, the King Street Common Zoning District Expansion, we'll call on our Town Planner, Marin Toohill.
Thank you, Anthony, for the introduction. I'd like to introduce, in turn, Anna Houston, member of the Planning Board. She will review with you details of Article IX. Thank you, Anna.
Thanks, Marin. Hello, Littleton residents. I'm Anna Houston, a member of the Littleton Planning Board, and we have a special Town Meeting soon, on Wednesday, February 15th, starting at 7:00 p.m. The special Town Meeting will be at the Littleton Middle School Gymnasium, and I hope you can attend. Before I share information about Article IX, which is titled "The King Street Common Zoning District Expansion," it's important to revisit three important events that have happened to get us to Article IX. First, when IBM left a couple of years ago, Lupoli Companies purchased the 41-acre parcel, and we, as a town, voted affirmatively at Fall 2021 Town Meeting to create what is known as a King Street Common Zoning District, allowing for a mixed-use development in the future. Second, after a public hearing process in June 2022, the Lupoli Companies was granted a special permit at the 41-acre parcel to build a mixed-use development. Now, the third piece of background information is that the property south of IBM, also known as The Mill or 410 Great Road, is under agreement with Lupoli Companies, and in December of 2022, just a couple months ago, after a public hearing process, the Lupoli Companies was granted another special permit at this 4.2-acre parcel to create a multifamily residential development project containing up to 285 units of multifamily housing. This parcel at 410 Great Road is considered a phase of the 550 King Street project directly across the street, which is in the King Street Common Zoning District. Since 410 Great Road is a phase of 550 King Street, it makes sense that 410 Great Road be in the King Street Common Zoning District as well. It also makes sense to clearly define the zoning for the parcels around 410 Great Road. So now, I'll share pertinent information about Article IX on the special Town Meeting Warrant. This article rezones six parcels from the Village Common Zoning District to the King Street Common Zoning District, basically changing the parcels you see in green to be a part of the yellow zoning district as depicted on the map. The six parcels include The Mill at 410 Great Road, the Connet Building with the Littleton Subshop and Valley Wild Books, the shopping area with the Vinyl Vault, Electronics Plus, and the new Oriental Supermarket, the lovely yellow house that's there, also at 470 King Street, and the vacant parcel south of the Shell Station, as well as, on the other side, the former Yangtze River Restaurant. There are additional amendments for these parcels. At 410 Great Road, since this is a four-acre site and it requires a master plan development special permit, just like across the street, the previous bylaw language stipulated a special permit was required at five acres. So by lowering it to four acres, it requires a master plan development special permit. Density is revised for the King Street Common Zoning District depending on the location within the district. For 410 Great Road, this means density is based on parking requirements. Within 40 feet of the Great Road right-of-way, the maximum height of the building can be four stories or 50 feet. The current Mill Building stands at four stories right on Great Road. And then beyond 40 feet from Great Road right-of-way, the maximum height can be six stories or up to 75 feet, which, for perspective, the current Mill Building stands at five stories with a cupola on top. So let's look at the map more closely on Great Road. Starting at the street, the first pink strip is a proposed six-foot sidewalk, then there's a green strip, which is about 12 feet wide to provide nice landscaping. Then there is another pink area under this bluish color, which is the four-story portion of the proposed building, and then the orange color to the left of the thick dash line represents the six-story portion of the proposed building. Then here, along Great Road, on the lower right-hand side, will be the United Elastic Monument Park to commemorate The Mill. Moving to the King Street side on the map, here you can see the parcels to be rezoned in a tan shade. For these four parcels on King Street, within 130 feet of the King Street right-of-way, height is based on the original Form-based Code, Article 30, which does not exceed 2 1/2 stories, and means the streetscape on King Street cannot go any higher. Buildings beyond 130 feet from the King Street right-of-way can be six stories or 75 feet, whichever is less, so this means 410 Great Road. You can see the red dash line delineating the setbacks. So those are the proposed amendments to the King Street Common Zoning District in Article IX. This information is for a revised motion that you will see at Town Meeting. I hope to see you there. Town Meeting, Wednesday, February 15th. Thank you for your time to watch.
Thank you. Today, I'm here with Jeff Yates, Planning Board Member and Vice Chair of the Planning Board. We are here to review Article 10, the Zoning Bylaw Amendment to Add a Firearms Business Zoning Bylaw. The Planning Board, in response to concerns raised by Littleton residents, is proposing a new zoning bylaw called the Firearms Business Zoning Bylaw. For a detailed description, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Yates.
Hi, everyone. As many of you know, who, there are many people interested in this issue as a result of a Boston Globe article in September that identified almost 90 firearm dealers in The Mill Building. And they were there legally, and there was a great concern, and the Planning Board, the selectmen, started a process to look into how we can go forward with a zoning bylaw that would preclude this type of situation from happening in the future. What we did, the elements of this by... And I should say that we were always cognizant of Second Amendment rights, and the intention was not to preclude gun dealing in Littleton, but simply to identify how it could be located so that residents would feel safe and secure. So, we... The elements of the bylaw that was... That we're proposing, that you're going to vote on, are locating firearms businesses in industrial A and industrial B zones, not in the Village Common Area or the King Street Common Area or residential areas. The second major element was a... No business could be located within 500 feet of another business, so these businesses would be spread out. To come up with the 500 feet, we actually looked at GIS mapping showing zoning and what areas would be available under different distances, and 500 feet allowed areas where these businesses could be located, you know, according to our regulations that we're proposing. The other... Another issue was that a firearms business would have to get a special permit from, in this case, the Planning Board, which is significantly different than now, which all they need is a business license. I urge you all to look through the article. There's much detail in writing this. We worked pretty hard, because it's not a state-of-the-art thing to do for a town our size. We looked at other bylaws, in particular Wellesley and Newton. We leaned heavily on our Town Council. We had to do this because we want to propose something that cannot be challenged, that, first of all, can be approved by the Attorney General and cannot be challenged in its substance. So, I think, you know, the other aspect of the... So I think, you know, the, the other aspect of this, it's like any business, you know, there are hours of operation, there are security measures. I would point out that this type of zoning is used for two other activities in town. The first and the oldest was Littleton established an adult entertainment district and during, I don't know how many years ago, that 20 years, 25 years. And the cannabis businesses are under similar purview as this. We, in our minds, thought of locating these gun businesses in the same way we are thinking of, you know, how we review cannabis business. However, the big difference is there's no limit on the number of gun businesses. They're just subject to these regulations. So I hope you will consider this. We had several very well-attended meetings. There were, there was a very well-attended Select Meeting, Select Board Meeting. There was much input from concerned citizens. I hope the people that were involved in this process will come to the town meeting and give it their support. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Jeff, for that detailed overview. I think you did cover everything from the meeting with the Select Board, the Planning Board's public hearing, and now the process to send this to town, to Special Town Meeting for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, team, for that wonderful explanation for those articles. Tim, hopefully this is something that's going to be helpful to our residents in hearing directly from, you know, those experts that really have worked diligently on these articles.
Absolutely. No, I think that that was a great innovation you came up with a couple of meetings ago, Anthony. There's nothing like kind of hearing from the people that are actually out in the field doing the work and the reasons behind the various articles and so forth. So we hope that it's been informative for you, if you've tuned in to this point, and we just wanted to remind you, the Special Town Meeting will be Wednesday, February 15th at 7:00 PM at the Middle School Gymnasium on Russell Street. And again, we thank you for joining us here today. If you have any questions prior to the town meeting, I'm sure the Town Administrator's Office would be happy to field your call or email or, honestly, just call if you've got a question. We'd like to, if we can answer questions ahead of town meeting, that, that's a win for everyone, we think. So again, Anthony, thank you for joining me here today, and always happy to do this, and we'll see you all at the town meeting on the 15th. Thank you.
Thank you.